This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the December fourteenth, Tenino City Council work session. I believe all council members are present. Who we got here with the exception of council member Davidson? We have Linda, John, Jason, Effie. Okay, we'll need an addition to the agenda to excuse council member Rachel Davidson tonight. She's attending the Little Seeds preschool, some kind of graduation ceremony where she's hurting three and four year old children around a stage. And she said it was hilarious because they were all going different ways and wrong ways. And everything went wrong last night and the parents really enjoyed it that everything went wrong. So we can all wish you luck. On the work session tonight, we can discuss the final budget adoption. We have a bigger agenda than usual because we're trying to get the things done that we need to get done so that we will not need a second meeting in December. I don't think anybody wants to be here around Christmas time if we don't have to. So if we can get the things done on the agenda tonight, we're in good, we're in good standing and we can make a motion at the end of the meeting to cancel the second meeting in December. We've had, we've got our final budget before us. We've had multiple public hearings and we've had multiple work sessions and meetings dealing with the budget. What we have presented to you is a balanced budget that has all of the positions that we've had in the past with the addition of a part-time Parks and Rec Coordinator. This would be a person that manages the museum and would also take on some additional duties to do with the Quarry House and programming things for like classes. You know, you could have, it would be somebody who coordinated like maybe a quilting class or a cooking soups class or cookies or baking or knitting or anything to that nature. We could, we could have, we will have somebody that would start programming those things in to our Parks and Rec Department, if you will, and then hopefully grow that. These things would, you know, this would be funding a position, but these, some of these activities would also generate money to help pay for the position. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet or how much, you know, revenue would be generated. That doesn't need to be the focus. Hopefully they would get into some of the, you know, some of the sports facilities, you know, putting together softball tournaments, managing the pool and things of that nature. So we had that on the, we had that on the budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. In twenty nineteen, we put it in the twenty twenty budget, I believe. And just things as they played out, we didn't end up acting on it, but we've got it in this year's budget. Some additional items, there's some new, some additional revenue streams, the septicage receiving. We've got in there that we would be renting out the old Public Works building. We're developing contracts for having the Public Works building, the old Public Works building rented out. And this is just a building that's been a storage shed for mostly old toilets. I went in there and there's like sixty old porcelain toilets, for some reason, that are sitting in the old Public Works building. And a portion of the old Public Works building would be rented out by the Tenino Stone Carvers. And another portion would be rented out by Thorn Electric. He's a commercial electrician that we, who we primarily use for city, doing city electrical work. And in the contracts that we're having written out, they're, they're pretty much done. It says, and we, we got an estimate from a commercial real estate person said that based on current market trends, each side would be rented out at about $700 a month. So the building in tot, in total would be rented out for fourteen hundred bucks a month. But we're putting into the contract where the, the organizations that are renting out the facility could do in-kind work for the city. So us being Tenino and having a lot of stone public things, we can always use help maintaining them and that takes expertise. We also like to do public projects using sandstone. So we will be working with the stone carvers to either, they will either pay the lease, terms of the lease or of equal value at $700 a month. They would do things like maintaining, you know, some of our masonry or doing some, some larger scale public works project where they would be, you know, maybe we're doing something we want to add sandstone to it. So that's, that'll be a real feather in our cap. And then the electrician, we don't have a city electrician. So we, when we have to have pumps rewired, when we have to have things worked on that are, that you need to be a licensed electrician for, we, we hire somebody. With this agreement, we would be able to work out where they would do in-kind labor for us in lieu of that $700 a month rent. And this is, I think this is a huge win for us. It's a great, great idea, in my opinion, because this, I'm saying a lot. This building is just sitting there vacant, holding toilets. So I'm really excited about that. Another revenue stream that we're working on developing is our building inspector slash code enforcement person. We hired that position with the, with full knowledge that there's not enough work in the city to be doing that constantly. So we made them also a public works employee so they, they could be out working with the public works crew when they're not doing code enforcement and building code stuff. But we really want them in that world. So, and when we first brought them online, you know, I told BuCota and Rainier that we would love to have contracts with them once this person certified to do that. Rainier has reached out to us and they were, the contract's not ready yet, but they have put in their budget that they would be contracting with us to pay our code enforcement person to go to Rainier and, and do what they need in the code enforcement world. And, and hopefully BuCota will get on board with that as well. And that's, that's, that's great. Those communities could really do with somebody that can serve in that role. And I'm, I'm happy that we could, we could help them with that. And, and hopefully there'll be more opportunities to partner with them. Another thing I'm excited about is we're, we're hooking Dave Waterston back in, hopefully. Dave's joined us tonight and I think we tricked him onto the planning commission by having them start talking about solar panels and things like that. So we got them all excited. So you'll see on the agenda that Dave Waterston, I've asked that the council confirm his appointment to the planning commission. And that's, those are, those are the big items. Other than there is a more of an unusual request being that this is the end of the year. If you look at one of our action items tonight, we're getting into the, so we're doing a lot of remodeling at in-city hall and we're going to need to do some purchasing of furniture and office equipment, mostly chairs and desks and things of that nature. So we went and we looked through the capital expenditure budget. There's a bit of money left over that was for park improvements, interpretive signs, campground improvements to the total of seventy-four hundred dollars. We are asking council tonight if we can use the remaining funds in the highlighted accounts, as you see in your agenda, to use towards purchasing some of the office equipment and furniture. I don't think that's going to be enough. We really, you know, the remodel has been amazing. It's been significant and we want to make sure that we're not putting in, you know, kind of old, used, falling apart chairs that, you know, hand me downs. We want to make sure that it, that everything kind of fits and it works well. And we've got the money to do that. And it's also, you know, as we upgrade all of our facilities, it'll allow us to, you know, rent them out. The, the council chambers, we've already had some HOA folks that have asked about renting out the council chambers. And, and once you guys see how it's really looking, I mean, you're going to see how much potential is there. I've been talking a lot in the work session. Does anybody else have any questions about, let's start with the budget?
Not me, man. I'm not going to be doing too much talking because it just makes me cough.
Well, that's, that was, she chimed in to say no. Thank you, Linda. Okay. All right. Okay. Let's, let's just go right into our reports then. So I'm going to pull that up since we've got time in the work session. We can bust those out. So is, I'm not, George Sharp is probably not here because the EDC is having its dinner tonight. So I am guessing, is George here?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. George, would you like to give the Chamber of Commerce report?
Yeah, first off, we'd like to thank Public Works and the Fire and Police Department for their work on the Tenino tree lighting and shutting down the streets so we could have the motorcycle drill stream. Those had a great turnout for the tree lighting and appreciate it and also the support.
You really did. That was a great event.
Thanks. And then tomorrow we're going to have our lunch where we're going to honor Heddons and have a proclamation by the City Red. And then we have a nine-minute video of Barbara Hedin talking about the whole history of how they came to the community and the things that they did over the years. And then, yeah, that's, then our next meeting will be after tomorrow will be the third Wednesday of January. And the chamber lunches are always the third Wednesday of the month at noon and it'll be at the Kodiak Room.
Where is the, the chamber meeting tomorrow?
It's at the Kodiak Room.
Okay, that's what you just said. Okay. Okay, thank you, George. EDC.
They're having their last meeting of the year is the board tonight, so that's about it for now.
Okay, and the, the Economic Development Forum, I thought went fantastic. It was, it was very well attended. There was a lot of good seminars, a lot of good speakers. Did you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, we had a wonderful turnout for, you know, being COVID still and people came and we got rave review about all the different breakout sessions and things actually came out of those breakout sessions and are being worked on. And our lunch speaker talking about what's happening in the economy and what we look forward next year, so.
Okay. VCB, no report. Fire District twelve.
We had to move our meeting till next week.
Thank you, sir. Library. Is Linda the librarian joining us? Okay. Museum.
They were open this weekend.
Awesome. Jody, are you wearing a helmet?
No, it's my.
Oh, okay. You're like a fighter pilot from, from here. Okay, would you give your report?
Well, that way other members of the household can be noisy and I don't have to listen to them.
Perfect.
Um, so we are pretty excited to start a new food program within the food bank through the EDC's Ag Department. That will start this next week. We're going to start getting some food in that is Washington grown and it's harvested and within a day or two, it comes to the food bank. So our folks that are getting food through the food bank are going to get absolute fresh veggies and fruit and then occasionally some other things. So we're pretty excited about this new program. We want to see how, how well it goes and yeah, pretty excited. The other thing is that we will be closed next week to give the, all of our hardworking volunteers some time off to be with their families. But if there is an emergency, they just need to call.
Do we have like a bat signal for you guys, spotlight on City Hall?
No. We could do that. That would be absolutely cool. Yeah, I want you to like try and figure that one out, yes.
Okay.
Pretty much everybody on the planet, I swear now, because of the way my phone rang today, has my cell number. So if there's an emergency, just get ahold of C Hall, get ahold of us through the Facebook. Because I answer that Facebook messenger very promptly. And whatever goes on in that Facebook messenger stays there. It does not, not everybody in the world gets to see that. So that's, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Jody.
Thanks.
Arch Commission. Back to you, George.
As I sent you, Mayor, we'll have the five members probably apply in early January and then meeting with Kayleen to talk about the ordinance and putting that into place.
Excellent. Civil Service Commission. They had their first meeting scheduled. There was some miscues with some of the new civil service commissioners. So, and Jody can't meet the day that they're meeting, so they need to figure out if they want to change their meeting dates, which they can do. And Commissioner Copeland showed up and he got a, a good rundown from the chief. And Commissioner Whitworth, we need to coordinate with the secretary and not him. So his secretary does the scheduling. So we're working out the kinks with the new folks and we've got another meeting scheduled next month.
So Wayne, excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it can be on those days. It just has to be after 12 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, you guys will get that figured out, I'm, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, I just haven't heard from anybody.
Okay.
So I.
Go ahead.
So I just thought I was like taken out the board, so it's okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay, well, I just needed to.
We can't remove you from the board without cause and a council.
And not being there would be cause.
Yeah, so like really you've got, you've got better standing than, than I do or any of the council members. Almost.
Okay.
Improvement Grant Review Committee.
No report.
Finance Committee, Planning Commission. Public Safety Chief of Police. He is attending his Lions Club Christmas dinner tonight. They've been fairly busy. There's some goings on with the school and some things that they're working out. There's a, you know, I don't, I don't really want to get into it because some of it's, it's kind of law enforcement, school matters, but there was, there was an issue of some threatening Facebook postings and stuff like that that came out last week and then they kind of resurfaced. There is a kid that they're working with who's not in the school right now. So they're, they're working these things out, but we are going to have an, some additional officer presence this, this, the end of this week. And we're working very closely with the school to ensure that public safety is taken care of and our school and our police department are working very well together patch to patch. I spoke, I spent some time on the phone with Chief Hutchings tonight and some time on the phone with Superintendent Endicott tonight. And the school and the, the police department are working very well together. The chief's hiring process is going well. We have wrapped up the background investigations and we have our Paulies and psychs scheduled next week. And we, we don't expect any hiccups with that. And I, I look forward to doing some formal introductions of the candidate that we've offered a conditional offer to. Came out number one and all the, all the testing processes with the, with the public, with the department. And, and we should, we should be able to do some press releases kind of first of the year. Public Works Director, I do not see. City Planner, Building Official.
I'm here, Wayne. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Nothing, nothing much on the agenda at this time. Hand it out a CO to the kiosk center of, by the market. Noticed signage finally went back up on the market as well. And we also got the permit issued, ready to go for the signage on the kiosk. So that those signs are ready to go. Olivia signing awning is going to be installed in those. So we just need them to come down, pick up their permit and get that part of that project done. And on the code enforcement end of things, we finally were able to abate the vehicle that was left on the property on Ritter Street. Worked with the homeowner on that one for about four months now and we finally got all the process done. So that car is no longer in city's vicinity. Other than that guy.
Thank you, ready? That takes us to City Attorney, Clerk Treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is ready for Christmas. Um, I don't have much to report other than I'm elated that the budget process is done. Hooray. And the city hall renovation is going so well. It looks amazing. Upstairs in the council chambers, the coloring is so bright up there, which I wouldn't have guessed with the darker wood. And the mayor's office and the kitchen, I mean, it just all looks so amazing. They're going to be actually definitively starting in the office next week. And it looks like at this time Jen and Rhonda will be the only ones displaced and moved into the mayor's side. It looks like I'll be able to stay in my side for a while, but that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Kayleen. That, my report, so.
Mayor, you got a question from Ms. Clem?
Yes, sir.
I, I wanted to ask Jen about a message that she forwarded to me about oath of office on December the 29th. Do I have to attend that?
No, you do not, the, no.
I believe it's a virtual Zoom.
It is virtual, yes.
Yeah, it's not in person.
Hold on. So we, so we do our oath of office and that's all that really legally needs to take place. Some people, and I know like John, Councilmember O'Callaghan likes to attend. I like to attend every, every election, they do a, an oath of office countywide that is done by a judge and by the, the county auditor. And it's, it's a nice thing to attend. It's kind of gets all the newly elected officials together to meet each other and some of the, the other elected officials can get together. They're doing it virtually now, which kind of, in my opinion, kind of changes the nature of it. But you do not have to attend. It's just, it's, it's an, it's just a, it's just a tradition event.
Okay.
But you do have to get sworn in.
Yeah, yeah, you can, but you can get sworn in, you get sworn in by City Hall, which she's already done.
I've already done that.
Yep. Okay, you're good.
Yep. You're official.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So I, I attended the, the expo for the EDC. We've been, been at City Hall several days when I'm not working and we've been working on the, the city budget, of course. The city budget and the city hall renovation are kind of the two big things that we're dealing with day in and day out. Spent some time with the audit team. They're working on wrapping up the, our two, well, you know, well-known, and I don't want to get into details, the, the fraud investigations that we've, we battled over the last, the last two years, almost. Those should be wrapped up soon, one sooner than the other. So there's that. Other than that, can't really think of too much. Attended the tree lighting, speaking with department heads, met with the county parks manager, just since we had a retirement from the previous parks manager, parks coordinator from the county, the new individual. We got together and we had a lot of the same philosophies. He wants to carry on the, the great working relationship and the initiatives that we've started with his predecessor, Kerry Hibden. I really stressed the desire to continue the county trails, the, the bike trail down towards BuCota. He's well aware of the feasibility study that we had done and what the next steps are. I also started working with Commissioner Mahia to make sure that gets kind of back on the county's agenda. And then I talked to him about how the county did and he says still wants to help us pave the parking lot in front of the Quarry House and kind of more formalize things up there. So that's, that's being worked on. Be that, any report?
Yeah, there's a survey out right now that if you guys have like 10 to 15 minutes to fill out, it's about our youth. It helps them plan their work for next year and everything. And it is anonymous, but if you go to their Facebook page, the Be That Facebook page, you'll find the survey and it's got to be in by December 16th.
Thanks, sir. CIP, solid waste.
Got a question, Wayne.
Go ahead, sir.
Not me, Kayleen, Kaylee.
Kayleen.
Hey Wayne, I just wanted to add to what you were saying in regards to the investigation. Council, if you'd like to stop by, I do have a preliminary report only for your eyes to see at this time. So if you, when you come in to take care of city business, if you just want to come see me, I do, I will, will have that available for you.
Okay, Steady.
One thing, Mayor, I'd like to add to the chamber report first, which is we're having a holiday decorating contest for both residents and businesses. You can go to the chamber Facebook page and see the rules and people submit their photos and then they'll be voting by Facebook people. And then on Steady, we meet this Friday at the Sandstone Cafe, eight to nine thirty. We have two guest speakers coming in. Annette Pitts from the Visorin Convention Bureau will be our first speaker. Our second speaker are three people from USDA Rural Development who'll be sharing with us about the new programs that are coming out and to help build back better what they have available for that. So it's going to be a great program.
Thank you, George. TCOM 911, Tenino School Board, she is not with us. TRPC. TPB.
It was pretty interesting. The, the interesting part was when we started talking about finally electric vehicles and what the state is looking at doing with them. There was a meeting that I reported about two years ago. It's not much different from that, except that it's, it's real heavy on government side as far as electric vehicles and, and any kind of conveyance and the last mile type deal, as if nobody in the general public will be able to afford an electric vehicle. They're pushing real heavy. Yeah, Dave, I was there at the meeting. I see you shaking your head. But in any event, it seems like there was a real heavy emphasis on, on government transportation, buses, Ubers, last, and then whatever your last mile of your destination is one way or the other. What I find good about it is that they're finally starting to take a real solid look at electric vehicles and how they're gonna, how they're going to be able to facilitate all that stuff. The question that I brought up again is how are we going to be able to electrify all of these vehicles with the structures that we have right now? Even Elon Musk is saying that we don't have enough power to do it and there was no answer to the question. But we are moving forward, which is, which is a positive thing to see. We just need to have more conversation on private, private ownership as well.
Excellent, thank you. All right, that concludes our work session. So we will take a brief two-minute recess and then we'll start the regular meeting. Thank you.
Good to see you, Dave.
All of you also. You guys.
This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the December fourteenth, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Council Member Davidson, who is, we are asking that added to the consent calendar as an excusative for absence. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for everybody to stand and do flag singing. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Pope, for which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An agenda needing approval?
Move approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
With one addition, if you may.
I thought you were going to do that under the consent count.
I thought you were going to do that under the consent calendar.
Uh, yeah, but you gotta add it to the consent calendar.
Okay.
Is it on there?
Yeah, I put it on there.
Good job. Never mind. Uh, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Is hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, meeting minutes for 11:23, 21.
Move approval.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for 11:23, 21. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar consisting of November 24th, 2021 through December 14th, 2021. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $26,102. Claim checks 30258 through 30291 and EFTs in the amount of $66,465.22. For a grand total of $92,565.24. No liquor cannabis licenses, renewals, and motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, as well as Councilmember Davidson's absence. Is there any discussion? Second. We have a motion. We have a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to public comments. If there is anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, now is your opportunity. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. All right, going once, going twice, moving on. Uh, we have new, no old business. We have some new business. After review of 2021 budget, we have found some excess funds that were not used. We, in, in the capital budget, we're hoping to use these funds to update office furniture for City Hall. Uh, the current furniture is not functional and very outdated. Attached is above budget position showing the funds. Uh, so Jen can scroll down to that, if you may. Uh, this is, there are some items within the capital budget where we did not, uh, use the funds. Um, and all we're asking for is council to make a motion to approve, uh, authorization of those excess funds for use for office furniture and, uh, needs in remodel. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a question. Did you check to make sure that we can use these funds to do that? Cause most of the time when we're granted money for a project, if there was money left over, we had to give it back.
So this is, this has nothing to do with the, with that capital budget, uh, allocation. The money cannot be used to buy things that are considered temporary. So we can't buy desks. We can't buy computers. Uh, so, but if we, but we're still looking at this, we have a lot of money left in that allocation, a lot. But if some of the, if, if some of the desks that are made are permanent structures, so like the dais up in the council chambers is permanently built in. And so that can be used. So we're looking at maybe if some of the desks downstairs can be built in and custom built and then the money can be used for that. But then we still may need things like a new table and maybe some stacking chairs upstairs.
Jen's got something.
I'm sorry.
But this money that, that we're allocating for this is, has not, is not the money from the capital budget. This is money that is from, uh, things like the general fund and other places and we've put it into capital budget for park improvements and interpretive signs and campground improvements. But we didn't use all that money this year, so we're asking to siphon some of that money off into these other, uh, expenses, which is totally.
Can I also just chime in that, um, some of the desks are duct taped together and very outdated that we got it like the surplus years ago and some tall people that work at City Hall don't fit under their desk. So just saying.
I just wanted to make, get this out on the record. So if anybody wanted to see why we were doing that, they now have a verbal record of it.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that it got out there. So call for the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Uh, that brings us to Tenino Food Bank lease. So we had to review, we do this annual review of the Tenino Food Bank, uh, lease of the, the warehouse facility. We just want to make sure that the city, you know, the expenses the city incurs for the use of the building are being covered in the lease. Uh, thing, you know, so it's really just the minimal stuff that it costs for us to keep the building heated, lighted, uh, and insured. And so in our review of that, we've, uh, redone the lease to ensure that those costs are accounted for. And we have prevent, we're presenting it to council, asking them to approve the new lease agreement, which we would then present to, uh, the community service center. Kayleen, you want to talk about any changes that were made to the lease?
Yeah, there was some, um, there was some increase. The, um, electricity was, came in higher than what it was, you know, budgeted for. And the insurance is increasing 5.5% all across the board, not just that building. And so the new, the new rate would be, um, $4,700 for the year, which is an increase of $275 per quarter. So, anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, I moved approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next up, excited for this one. Uh, planning commission application from former council member Dave Waterson. It's great to have you back on one of our meetings. I knew you couldn't be away too long. We sucked you back in. Uh, but I definitely missed him on the council. Not saying that, uh, his replacement hasn't been excellent. We've, we've gone through, uh, we're on, we're on, uh, Elaine, who is going to do a great job. We had Cutter for a while. He did a great job. But definitely missed, uh, Dave's input and, and his, uh, his presence. So with the council's approval, um, we'll all be very excited, I imagine, to have him on the, uh, planning commission. Spoke to, uh, Commissioner Will Rutherford today and he thought it was a great idea. Thought it was a great idea like four months ago when Dave and I first talked about it, but a lot of things been going on. So, uh, he kind of held on to the application. But then as soon as they started talking about solar panels, he was like, you son of a gun, I'm in. He's, that's how we got him. So, uh, please review his application and, uh, I'm asking council to make a motion to confirm.
I just did.
Okay, we, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second to confirm, uh, former council member Dave Waterson as, uh, our newest planning commissioner. Is there any discussion? I think he's going to be a great asset to the planning commission. Uh, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you all. I look forward to, uh, to participating.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Waterson. Your new title. You haven't had that one yet. Can, can you tell us all the, all the titles you've held within the, the area? Fire chief, planning commissioner, city councilman, mayor pro tem. Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
All right.
I'm not into titles, so I don't keep track of them.
However, you collect them like no other. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Waterson. Uh, we have the old Public Works Building lease. Please review the lease and motion to approve for Thor and Electric lease on behalf, on half of the Public Works, uh, old Public Works Building.
No problem.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the lease agreement for the old Public Works Building with Thor and Electric. We're still working on the one for the sand, the stone cutters. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the EDC contract. Uh, the change this year, last year it was $5,000 a year for the, for the retention of our EDC partners. And all they do, uh, this year we have increased the, the contract price to 10,000. And we, I mean, uh, we can't pay them enough for all the things that they do. All the, all the support we get from George, all the support we get from Aslan. Uh, so, you know, it, it does, it's, it is doubling the cost, but still, uh, they are absolutely our closest partner. And this is, I mean, this is, this doesn't even begin to cover the, the benefit we receive from having them in as close as we do.
No problem.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the contract for the EDC as presented. Is there any discussion? George, do you have anything you want to add?
No, we're just, we're just looking forward to implementing it, what the, what's in the contract for 2022. The creative district, uh, in Creuse, now get it up and running, the arts commission and everything. We have planned for that. And then continue on the egg park development. And then also, you know, what, look around and what can we land for other businesses coming in? We were happy that we were able to land the Ship Lap quilt shop and coffee house this last year, which I think has been a great boon for the community. A lot of people are coming to town, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, resolution 2021-08, surplus police vehicle.
No problem.
Thank you.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution 2021-08, resolution city of Tenino, Washington, declaring certain city vehicles to be surplus and no further use to the city. Uh, whereas city of Tenino authorized pursuant laws, whereas city council of Tenino described vehicle below, whereas city council orders the sale of described vehicle, uh, city council, it is the Chevy, 2011 Chevy Tahoe, the, the Beaver Mobile. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to resolution 2021-09, LGIP. Uh, we are asking you review and motion to approve resolution 2021-09.
How much do we, uh, we need an approval. We need a motion before we can get a discussion. Uh, so move approval.
Thank you.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, how much are we looking at investing, uh, especially in these times? And how much do we already have invested?
It, I, I believe it's, there's like just a standard allotment. I don't have the specifics of it. Um, Kayleen, do you know anything more about this?
I do not.
Okay.
Uh, last time we, we went through this type of a, a discussion, it was with, uh, Edward Jones and we were supposed to get, uh, some kind of updates about every six months. The way that, uh, the investments are going right now, uh, we might want to do something and get, at least get an understanding about every quarter, what's going on with, with the money that we have invested. Uh, for example, durable goods, the pricing on that is up 45% on durable goods. Uh, so we need to start keeping a really close eye on what's going on. And if the United States, uh, does go to a Bitcoin type of, uh, type of a situation, we need to be in a position to move quickly to save what we have.
Yeah. The discussion with Edward, the discussion, that, that initiative, we started to try and create our own investment plan program with Edward Jones. It, it never got off the ground. It got very complicated very quickly. And so we just deferred back to the local government investment pool. And this is allowing us to participate in it, but I don't think it specifies us investing anything heavily into it.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know. And this isn't, I don't believe this is specifically a contract stating that we are contracted to keeping monies there. This is, um, this was put into place basically so I could have access to even get records on the account because I am not on there at this time. So I can remove and or delete, you know, people that are on there and to just so I can have access. This is what they're requiring of us. We also had a form that.
And that's fine, but as a city, uh, knowing what we're going through right now, uh, we've, we've got people that are getting pay increases. But when you look at the, at, uh, interest, uh, not interest rate, inflation rate, uh, the pay increases are not even keeping close to what, uh, inflation is. So we need to keep a really close, a close eye, which is something we haven't really done in the past too well. Uh, any investments that we have, we need to start keeping a really close eye on that and make sure that we're not losing anything.
Absolutely.
That, you know, that's, that's my main point about this whole thing is that we need to start paying closer attention. Uh, and, and if we need to bring somebody in from this investment group to explain what's going on and how our money is, is, is working and being protected. Uh, and they're only willing to come in every six months. That's fine. At least we're, we're looking at what we have and making sure that we're protected.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Right. I believe that's a good idea as well. Um, as far as where we can invest would probably be something that we would have to consult the city attorney about, I would imagine. Cause I, I'm sure we can't just, you know.
Well, the LGIP is a prescribed state program.
Exactly.
Somebody, getting somebody from the LGIP to come in and explain how that program works, how the money's invested, where it goes, what we're putting in. That's, I think that's an excellent idea, John. And we should, we definitely should do that. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. That brings us to, uh, resolution 2021-10, consolidated fee schedule. Review and motion to approve resolution 2021-10 is suggested action. Uh, if you look at our fee schedule, we've got a couple of updates on here that we've highlighted. And, uh, we'll just, we'll just mention those as we go down. Um, so first one is council chamber rentals. It was $25 an hour. We have, we've upped it to $50 an hour with a two-hour minimum. Uh, and then quarry house rental. It was, I want to say 75, no, $100 all day, right? Jen, do you recall? So we upped that a little. And then, uh, per person fee for the pool, uh, it was, we kept that one says, it still says $4. It was, it was three and five. We had upped it to four and six. And I believe that is.
I think that was it. The, um, the one that you were just talking about, it was 130 instead of 190.
Okay. Um, we are still with our, our community center. We are still going to be vastly under, uh, our, our neighboring community centers. If you look to Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, if you want to rent out any of their facilities, we're absolutely very reasonable. And, and we're just hoping to get back into the game of allowing people to use these again. The, the quarry house, uh, it will be remodeled in the next five months or so before summer. Uh, the pool, we have our pre-construction conference for the pool tomorrow. And I look forward to getting that project underway. So this is the fee schedule. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I moved. Second.
Oh, and building code costs 2015 to 2018 was adjusted as well. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Ordinance 919, this is a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 919. Uh, uh, what, which one is, let's see. Uh, uh, what, which one is, let's see. Oh, that's not, I'm proposing additional local sales and use. So this is the first reading of ordinance nine one nine. Uh, this is a motion of the City of Tenino to impose an additional local sales ta, and use tax of one tenth of one percent for housing and related services and providing for other matters relating thereto and properly permitted as authorized by RCW eight two dash one four dash five through zero, adding a new section to the City of Tenino Municipal Code, providing for some severability and establishing an effective date. Uh, we've talked about this over the last four months. Uh, we were faced with the decision of participating in a, a, an imposed sales tax increased by the county in which that money would be collected and uh put into the, the county's coffers for use uh, in uh, use, use with uh their, their home fund that they're establishing countywide. Uh, we were interested in participating, but we asked that an MOU be established at the county level that allowed us, uh, I, I believe, access to these funds every three years uh, in co-op, in coordination with some of the other South County cities. Uh, they did not want to do that, so we chose the option uh, to present the option to council of establishing our own home fund where we would add an additional, impose an additional local sales tax. Uh, we estimate it'll generate around thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, these funds will have a very specific allowable uses. It will just develop its own fund and this can be used for uh like low income housing. Uh, it could be used for uh services to provide people that are in low income situations. And we'll do some additional education on that. Um, but we were faced with the county collect it and we may get access to it, or we collect our own and we'd establish our own program. We did not put any expenditures out of this fund in the twenty twenty-two budget. So if this is passed, it would simply be collecting money for the first year. And then in twenty twenty-three, we would be having the discussion about where these funds could be used. Do I have a motion?
Not for me. Move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Do I hear a second?
For lack of a mo, uh, lack of a second.
Was there no second?
No, I seconded it. Okay, I did.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And I, I wanna remind you, you know, council member Callahan, if we do not pass this, this does not stop the tax from happening. It just means we don't collect the tax money. So that's the point that I really want to strongly make. So it, with that said, is there any discussion on this initiative?
Well, you've, you've heard a lot of what I've had to say about this. Uh, we're taking money. We're not asking for the money. We sent a letter to the King of England well over two hundred years ago, a Dear John letter specifically because of this. He was taking money from us without, without asking for it. And that's exactly what we're doing here. This, to me, this is the same thing as uh, uh, imposing the fees on the license plates. Uh, we don't collect enough money to do anything with it. And at thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year, just to do one little thing, it's gonna take almost ten years to have enough funds. And by then, inflation and everything else may have eaten that up as well. Uh, if, if.
Okay, okay.
I had no problem.
What you're saying is we should let the, the big county have it. We shouldn't try to get a little bit for Tenino. We should just let them all go to the county. That's what you're.
That's what's gonna happen anyway. Most of the money that we spend is up north or over in Centralia. We don't have a whole lot here. We got a grocery store. We got a few gas stations now. Uh, we've got a few thrift stores. We've got some antique stores. But as, as far as going out to get the things that we need, like washing machines, dryers, all, all the, you know, just all kinds of different stuff, that's where we spend most of our money anyway, and they're gonna get it one way or another.
We also have Amazon and online shopping that our people get them, uh, we get the sales tax for, John.
And I was about to bring that up, so thank you very much. We get what's called sales equalization tax, and that's worked out to our favor very well. So my suggestion for, for along those lines is we've got two places to shop. Either online, because we automatically get that sales tax that we should have gotten here, or two, uh, shop local. That's it. We don't have.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember Callahan. Is there anyone, is there another council member have a, a, a point to make? Okay, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me. Aye.
Me.
Okay, so we have a split vote. I will vote in favor. And motion passes. All right, thank you. I haven't got to do that yet. That's the first time I've got to break a tie, so thank you. Thank you, Elaine, John, Jason, and, and Linda. That was, that was exciting.
Thank you, Rachel, for not being there.
Anything either. I'm really looking forward to vetoing something. So you guys need to come up with something that I don't like. All right, moving on. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. I appreciate everyone's opinion. We all do. Um, that brings us to ordinance nine two one. Ordinance nine two one is an ordinance of the City of Tenino amending the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Your approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Uh, Clerk Treasurer Kayleen, do you have anything to say about ordinance nine two one before we open it for discussion?
Um, I do not really, other than I did make a few changes on it, which is allowed, you know, before the second reading, according to the city attorney, so.
Okay.
Um, because we had other, um, expenditures go out, so I just kind of revamped it a little bit. That's it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on ordinance nine two one?
Yeah, Kayleen, I just wanna say thank you very much for all the work that you've done on this. I've been around for a little bit and I understand how difficult it is, especially since you're coming in on short notice to begin with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. And thanks to my staff as well, because they have been putting in their time as well to help me out through this.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for your remarks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to ordinance nine two two. This is a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance nine two two, which is the city budget for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine two two, an ordinance of the City of Tenino, adopt, approving the second reading and adopting the twenty twenty-two budget. Is there any discussion?
In case we didn't say thank, no, okay.
Uh, city hall staff, public works, and police department have put in a lot of work this year. It's been a, it's been a tougher year than usual with some kinda, with some of the staff changes and and new staff, but we, we worked really hard together. We pulled together and we got through it. Uh, what you have before you is a balanced budget. Uh, we have, we have pay raises included, our, our regular pay raises. We have cost of living increases. Very happy to make sure that we provide those to our staff. Uh, we've included uh longevity pay to recognize our, our long-term employees in which every five years they will get an additional, an additional one hundred dollars a month. Uh, that's very exciting. Uh, it also includes the parks and rec, part-time parks and rec position that we talked about that was in the previous budget, but we didn't staff it. Uh, it includes a new police chief at that increased rate that the council uh, recommended. It increases, it includes several new revenue streams that we've talked about in length that we're excited about, especially the septic receiving program. And uh, and it also uh includes a, a sewer and water rate study in the sewer and water fund and an additional vehicle for, for public works, along with all the other exciting things that we're working on. So thank you all. Is there any discussion about the twenty twenty-two budget and ordinance nine two two? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us to reports, which we've done all of, except I saw that librarian Linda joined us. So if you'd like to give your report, we would love to hear it.
Yes, can you actually hear me this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Yay. Okay, so I have two exciting announcements today. Um, the first one is that, starting today, we now have something called Launchpads. And these are essentially um tablets that are preloaded with um learning games, and they come in three age groups of three to five, uh, five to eight, and eight to ten. And the nice thing about these is that they do not require internet access. So you can check out up to two of these on a card and um have, go to town with the appropriate age group, um, with some learning games, so we're excited about that. We have quite a good selection since it just started today, and I'm eager to see people check them out and use them. And the second thing is that um, as of January fourth, which is our first day back at work for the library, since we're closed on Sunday and Monday, um, after the new year, um, we have a change in our open hours. We will be open um, ten to five Tuesday through Saturday. So we did this, um, we asked for input from library users in, in Tenino by sending emails to everybody who had an email address that registered uh, Tenino as being their home library, asking for their input. And um, there's also a very strong preference that we make it as easy as possible to remember. So instead of having three different times that we need to wheel off when we talk on the phone or tell people in person, it's just ten to five Tuesday through Saturday makes it easy for the public to remember when they can come and access the in-person library services. Um, so if you plan to visit another library after January first, be sure to call or check the website because um almost every library in our system changed hours at least somewhat to get to the standardization. So that is all that I have.
Thank you, Linda. Excellent report. All right, that brings us to the need for a motion to, what is the, I don't know, I don't remember what the proper way to do it is, John. To suspend the next meeting, to cancel the next meeting. You're the senior, you're the senior fellow here. What do we do?
Uh, I move that we cancel our next meeting for lack of business.
Do we have a second? We have a motion to cancel the second meeting in December for lack of business. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So Elaine, we will not be having a meeting at our, at the set, at the, the fourth Tuesday in December, so we will not have another council meeting until the second Tuesday in January, barring the unseen. If something comes up where we have to uh, do a special meeting or something, we would, of course, reach out to you and notify all the appropriate uh, channels, but that said, uh, public comment number two, if there's any way.
Wait, before we go to the public comment, don't forget to go in there and sign the vouchers still, though.
Thank you. Still need those signed. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address.
Dave Waterson, one one three two Central Avenue East. I see, if I read the budget right, that there's a plans to buy uh, purchase a, another police car this next year. Is that correct?
Uh, it's paying for the rest of the one that we already purchased.
Okay.
So we purchased a, a Chiefs, uh, a, a, a black Explorer to be used as a Chiefs car. And the second, and another payment is made on it this next year.
I read it wrong then. I thought we were purchasing a new. I was gonna suggest you buy an electric one.
Yeah, well, the new one is a hybrid.
Yeah.
So if you dr, uh, if you drive it, and you should try to drive it, it's pretty cool. Uh, you know how they work. If you're, like, if you're idling or whatever, it switches to electric and turns itself off. It's pretty, it's pretty cool. So we're taking baby steps. Uh, but the hope is that now, you know, those, those white Explorers that we bought, they're starting to age out, and we wanna start buying a new one every two years instead of like buying four of them in a year. So that, that's, that's our plan, but we're not doing that yet. Any other public comment? Any, anything else to say about the meeting, since you haven't made one, you haven't been to one in a while?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I just wanna say, uh, that I just needed some time away, and uh, I've been thinking about go, coming back to the planning commission for a bit, but uh, just kind of been putting it off, but uh, it's been on my mind for some time. Uh, so this wasn't a really, I know we're kind of joking about the solar thing, but this was really in my mind long before the whole solar discussion came up, so uh, I have a lot of interest in. I know people wanna maintain our community, uh, kind of similar to what it is now, but how do we deal with growth? How do we deal with traffic? How do we deal with making sure our seniors and our low-income people are appropriately considered when we're, when we're looking at uh, uh, planning? So I look forward to uh, working with you guys and the planning commission to really take a look at uh, what we can do there and what innovative things we can do in our, in our community.
Awesome. You, you're, you're.
Dave, it's great to have you back, Dave.
All right, any other public comments? Announcements. It's now the council member Callahan hour.
Wait, wait, Linda had a.
Linda, announcement?
Sorry, I just wanted to um say one more thing, and I don't know if this was covered in the reports during your working session or not, but um, I'm a member of the, of B-That, the Ykoto Tenino Health.
This conference will now be recorded.